It's smaller like. They're sports.
Oh, great. Now that you're recording, so I don't have my hearing aids in, so you'll have to talk. I can't do that very well, though.
Well, welcome to a week four of our study in the book of Isaiah. And this week's lesson was the life and times of Isaiah the prophet, part one, the divided monarchy. And so we're going to be spending some time this week looking at Isaiah. And the situation that he found himself where he lived. Because it drastically affected his call and what he was called to do. And wherever we find ourselves, we're supposed to live into the situation where we are and not be mad that we're not somewhere else, but try to make the best of wherever we are. And realize that wherever we are is unless we've been openly disobedient to God, wherever we are is where God probably wants us to be. And if we don't think we have any sort of call in that area, we need to spend some time in prayer, listening for the will of God. So we can get on the right track and do what he wants us to do in the situation where we are. So we'll be looking at that this week. And so before we get too far in, let's go ahead and have an opening prayer. So gracious heavenly father, we thank you for our time together. Lord, I'd ask that you would through your spirit, lead us through our discussions and that we would draw closer to you by the study of your word. For the many people that are on our hearts and in our minds that have the illnesses or have had surgeries. Lord, we lift them up and we'd ask that you would surround them, that you would hold them close. For those who have lost loved ones, we lift them up too as well, Lord, and pray that they will find peace and comfort and recognize the good times that they had for so long. For us, as we continue, Lord, I'd ask you would guide us and lead us. And for anyone who would view this video at a later time, you would also pour yourselves into their lives so that they would come to know you better. Lord, be with us now as we continue. Pray this in Jesus' name, amen. So the life and times of Isaiah the prophet. Did anyone enjoy this week's lesson?
We did number five.
I didn't remember.
Or do we, were we able to read it this week?
Well, they don't have to read most of it, but it was really quite a coincidence because I'm reading through the Bible in a year and I'm actually.
So in a word from the author at the beginning, he, she talks about if we are going to understand Isaiah's message, we need to first understand Isaiah's world. And I mean, she's saying we need to know the context in which he was living. And what does his world look like? What's going on? Who is his audience? And why is he focusing on the topics at hand? And that's, those are the questions that every time we approach scripture, we should try to understand what was the author saying? Who was he saying it to? What was going on that caused him to say it? And so that's something that we always need to try to look for. And you know, sometimes we talk about the who, what, when, where, why, and how. And figuring out that context can be very helpful in trying to understand what's going on.
I thought too, that's a good question to ask each of us as we're doing ministry, as we're doing that. So quickly, what, what, what's the background? What's influenced you? What makes, you know, has different things in your community that you had? Again, I grew up on a dairy farm, so that working, milking cows twice a day, every day. Partly of who I am and how I work and stuff too. So that background. Are there other things that influenced you growing up or different, you know, things just like he has to deal with? These, you know, division. So is there anything that in your life that affected you, changed you, helped you?
I think my life as far as being a servant to the Lord is always evolving. But my parents were very caring people to take care of other people. And I think that that's one of my strong points is not only do you get to care for them, but you get to know them too. And so many times we're more in settings, you know, people superficially, you know, just to say hi and stuff. But when you spend time, Bible study is another good thing that when you spend time in a Bible study, then you know those people. So mine's ever evolving and, and the situation with my daughter certainly has given me more of a heart for hope house. Too, in the struggles those people go through.
Other backgrounds, it could be a short statement or a long statement. What's influenced you?
I'm trying to keep it short. Historically, I, I find it difficult because we who are living now, we've never faced a civil war. Now, our ancestors did, and especially if you live close to the Mason Dixon line. You know, one brother chose to go north, another chose to go south. So, but that kind of a question is just wh- what would I do? And that'll come later on in here. I don't, it ever be heartbreaking to make that kind of a choice. During the Revolutionary War, it was kind of similar. Are you going to be loyal to king? To your homeland, many of your parents were still there. Or you, you joined the revolution. And many, many went to Canada. And we saw that in our lifetime. People went to Canada. Hard, hard decisions.
You almost joined the air force?
Well, yeah, and I was, you know, thinking globally in wrestling, in Ball State ROTC, wrestling with those kinds of questions. Difficult.
And that happened into the seventies.
Yes, yes, it got, it got more difficult.
I didn't catch what you said.
People thinking about going to another country continued into the seventies. Because the Vietnam.
Any other background or things that affect who you are in your ministry?
Well, I was glad to get off the farm. I'm glad his mother sang to college.
Well, my folks all, both worked. And I've got an older brother and our grandmother lived with us. And so I think that gave mom more freedom to think about being able to be in a workplace and that made my brother and I more independent because we, we would get a list of things to do. And sometimes it didn't get done till the last minute. And so, yeah, we got it done, but was it quality? I don't know, but you know, we spent too much time during the day goofing off. But that taught us independence and, and planning and time management, that kind of stuff. My mom worked for Firestone, my dad worked for Good Year. So we, to this day, continue to pay attention to what's going on in Indianapolis five hundred. Because of the tires.
So were you Eastern Ohio? Is that where you're from?
Yeah, and I was involved with sports and so competition and groups, teamwork, those kinds of things I've always enjoyed. Even to this day, I don't know what to do now since March Madness is over.
Do you need another list?
I should have recorded.
And hopefully sports or other things help that teamwork idea. Hopefully the church does too. Working together.
But like, I've always been amazed, no matter what you think something's going to be when you make a major decision in your life. You really have no idea, like right, joining the military, no idea, absolutely no idea. No matter how many TV shows you've watched, no idea what it's actually is. And it seems like just about every major life-changing decision that you make, you don't really know what you're gonna get when you get into it. And so, you know, we, we talked about the importance of perseverance in our faith. And so it's, because you don't know, you just don't.
And in military, I think you really learn about teamwork and caring for each other. That is essential because if you don't care for them, there're gonna be a time. You're gonna need them to care for you, you know, you, you really need to work together, that kind of thing too. And as you say, that makes me think of Sandy. His dad had said, you know, encouraged him a lot. Here, here's a job opening as a funeral director. And he could have, they'd help him with a school, place to live and a job. And so he went there, never seeing a dead body. Never having experienced that at all. So it was like, oh, yeah, and really processed, you know. Thought about that, but it worked out. He did it for twenty-six years.
He learned.
We had a funeral director. Jim Town Church. And he remembers Vietnam and the hot nights and listening to the bodies explode. And gave his life to caring for people.
So Isaiah's life was really different because of what he'd gone through. And I don't know about you too, as, as I read through this and as I watched the video before. And you know, she shares the importance of knowing that there were two different countries at the time, Israel, Israel and Judah. Well, you know, I'd read the scripture a whole lot and it, I never had anybody tell me until long time, like, oh, there's northern Israel, there's south, there's two. I didn't realize all the things that are go, oh. You know, so knowing the background, knowing the history, knowing more helps us understand scripture so much better.
If you go on page forty, then it talks about real time and space. And talks about what Jeannie was just talking about, about the real time, the experience of a civil war. And even in the civil war, God told them that they were not to fight against each other. And sometimes they did that better than other times, but and you know, there were really only three kings of the entire nation. David and Solomon and Saul. And Rehoboth for a very short time until they ask him a question. But, you know, so we imagine Israel and going on and on. But it, it really didn't last long as an end, as an undivided country.
And that's a, a difficult thing too, because Israel now is a very undivided country. I mean, it has three major religions in it. It's not the past history, but also the current existing is against each other and not cooperative together.
And even within Judaism, there's great differences between what we might call denominations within the Jewish base, so.
Back then?
No, right now.
And can you imagine being a Palestinian Christian? Of which there are a number. Kind of make you want to duck into a hole someplace.
When you say Palestinian, are you saying Arab?
No, well ethnically, Semitic and Arab. But religiously, there are Christians who live in Palestine.
And Palestine is where? It's not Gaza? They were somewhere else too, weren't they?
But every place that's not the ten tribes or twelve.
Were they on the, let's see.
Mostly on the, the west side of the Jordan.
Gaza's on the west side.
I mean, I'm sorry, on the east Gaza Strip and then mostly on the east side of the Jordan, especially in the
In Palestinians?
At least that's my understanding, right?
Well, I know they wanted to build on where Israel's building. There's, we thought the Palestinians were building there, but they made it very hard for them to get any property to build houses. So Israel kind of took it over. So I didn't know where they were.
Well, before Abraham, it was all Palestine.
So where were the Jews? Pardon? Where were the Jews? You said all Palestine?
Abraham, we might call him the first Jew. Even though not until they're actually the twelve sons and one of them was named Judah, which gave us that word. But the first one called by God to be of the chosen people was Abraham. And before Abraham lived in the promised land and his family lived in the promised land. There were Palestinian, what we might call Palestinians living there. Moabites and Ammonites and Jebusites, all thoseites.
That's what makes it so difficult because it goes back a long way.
It goes back a long way, people getting moved out of their homeland for someone else to have a homeland there.
Before Columbus, we were all Indians of one tribe or another.
And be invaded, huh?
They came to the promised land.
Oh, you wanna try the video?
I'm calling this study, The Life and Times of Isaiah the Prophet. The Divided Monarchy is our subsection because now it's time for us to start painting that backdrop behind our prophet. What did his world look like? What was going on? Who was his audience? And why was he focusing on the topics at hand? Now, there are two things that you need to know about Isaiah's world. The first one that we're dealing with in this study is the divided monarchy. The second one that we'll deal with in our next study is the Neo Assyrian Empire. So let's get cracking. The divided monarchy lasts from nine thirty-one to five eighty-six B.C. On your handy dandy timeline that you come to know and love through your other epic of Eden studies.
That handy dandy timeline that there was one inserted in each of your books that you could open up and look at right now. If you have trouble seeing the printing up there that's like this big. And so the area that they're talking about, they're going to be right from right here, nine thirty-one B.C. And this upper line is the Northern Kingdom. It is established in nine thirty-one B.C. or so. And then this lower line is the Southern Kingdom. And so mostly up here, you have the ten tribes of the Northern Kingdom. And down here, you mostly have Judah. But in the reading, it said that Judah Simeon, the tribe of Simeon had been assimilated into Judah by that time. So that's where one of them goes. And then you have some Benjamites, then the tribe of Benjamin that live in the Southern Kingdom. But, but it's mostly Judah. And Judah is where we get the word Jew. Because after the Northern Kingdom disappeared in what, seven twenty-two B.C. That, all that was left was those tribes that followed that lower branch. Until the right five eighty-six B.C. when they were conquered. But that's it, that's further down the road.
The divided monarchy runs in this, within this green square. And nine thirty-one is right here and the collapse of the kingdom is right here. Now, most folks don't actually even know that there was a divided monarchy. People hear about Israel, they hear about the kings, and they just sort of assume that it's one kingdom that's flowing in and out of the texts. And so they hit the second kings and they find themselves quite confused because no one ever told them that in nine thirty-one B.C., the united monarchy of Israel had civil war. They had a north-south problem. I know that will stun you. And the north-south problem that manifested itself in different cultures and different economies finally erupted. And the country split. That divided monarchy results in parallel kingdoms. A northern kingdom that is running along this line and a southern kingdom that is running along this one. So the reason second kings might sound confusing is because the narrator is bouncing back and forth between telling the story of the northern kingdom and then the story.
Oh, before we go too much further, I've got this handout. If you could fill this out and then we'll grade it at the end. But
I have to leave right before the end.
But actually, if, if you follow along. If you follow along.
Thank you.
Can I answer some questions if? But I was supposed to pass this out before we did anything, had any conversation. You can fill it out and see. Reading comes for a hint. Then you see the first question is, how did the United Kingdom of Israel become divided?
Civil.
Civil war.
That, that makes it.
Then on top of the fact that there are two kingdoms, when he refers to the Southern Kingdom, he calls it Judah. When he refers to the Northern Kingdom, he calls it Israel. And when he needs to refer to both of them at the same time, he calls them Israel. No wonder we're confused. But we have to focus in on this era because our hero lands right here in seven fifteen B.C. Actually, he's going to preach from the days of approximately seven forty, all the good days of Manasseh. So here is Isaiah on your timeline. He will preach through the reigns of four southern kings. Do you remember the calm narrative that we studied last week? In the year that King Uzziah died, I saw the Lord. So Isaiah's ministry begins in the year that King Uzziah died. Then he will serve under King Jotham, King Ahaz, and Hezekiah. And according to tradition, Isaiah is actually martyred under the evil king Manasseh. So this is his range of ministry. And as you can see, he is in the Southern Kingdom. Now, the Southern Kingdom actually is most of what you know about your Bible. In the south is where the sons of David rule. In the south is where the temple is. In the south is where the priesthood is serving. And of course, the south is going to last longer than the north. So gets, who gets to write the final version of the Bible? That would be the south as well. There are, there are three critical events that you need to be familiar with. And these are all military encounters and they shaped Isaiah's world. Just like the Persian Gulf and nine eleven and current crises with ISIS shaped our world. So too, these three events shaped Isaiah's world. The first one is known as the Syro-Ekramite crisis. And it is a series of war that runs between seven thirty-four and seven thirty-two B.C. The second one is the actual collapse of the Northern Kingdom. When the Northern Kingdom falls to the Assyrians, who we're getting to next week. And the northern tribes are dragged off into exile. Have you ever heard of the ten lost tribes in Israel? These are them. The cities are conquered, the country is demolished, and the entire populace is dragged off as refugees. Never to revisit the pages of Israel's history again. They've called the ten lost tribes because of their loss. This happens during Isaiah's lifetime. And then the third event is one that happens of closing personal. This is another Assyrian king, King Sinakorin, who actually attacks the Southern Kingdom and besieges Jerusalem itself. So each of these three military events shapes Isaiah's life. And it will shape the messages that he preaches and the audience that he's preaching to. So ultimately, Isaiah serves under four kings. The four kings he serves under are Uzziah, which is a time of prosperity. In fact, from an historian's perspective, this is the low before the storm, the first half of the eighth century. Where everybody is happy, there's a chicken in every pot and a Prius in every garage. Jotham, he doesn't rule for long and he really doesn't look.
You want a chance to write any of that?
She goes really fast.
So you got prosperity and then for Jotham, she has not much. And really what all Joseph, Jotham did was he ruled with his father for a time. And then he ruled alone, but not much really happened. He got the country in not too bad estate and didn't mess it up too much. And then for Ahaz, the storm. The storm, oh, I can't read my writing. Oh, the storm hits, compromise, and the Syro-Ekramite wars. I guess you can read it up there too. Then Manasseh is martyrdom. And that's the martyrdom of Isaiah. Because that's what tradition tells us is that he was martyred because his message was no longer desired. And sometimes we say, don't kill the messenger. And that's kind of the idea where that comes from, where people taking messages to the king. You always want to be the one. It's protecting the one taking the message, not the one with the message.
I'm glad we have a video so we can pause it. Because I was watching and trying to take notes. What's the total amount of time, you know, these kings that Isaiah was working? Something like forty years.
Forty maybe? Nine thirty-one?
In the last year, when it, Uzziah died, so seven sixty-seven. To six thirty-nine at least. Who was the last one? Manasseh. Manasseh was six eighty-six, so seven thirty-five to. Somewhere between six eighty-six and six thirty-nine.
Not much. He's mostly uh serving in conjunction with his father Uzziah and his son Ahaz. The third king is one of our bookends. This is Ahaz. This is when the storm first hits. His life is a life of compromise. His war is the Syro-Ekramite crisis, and we'll get back to this. The fourth king is Hasan. His is a time of revival, a time of restoration, but he too has a military crisis. When Neo Assyria attacked once again, we now undertake the snapper. And the fourth and final king is Manasseh, which according to tradition is, when Isaiah is martyred. For a message that is no longer welcome. Okay, now let's take a look at the divided kingdom in real space. This map has become familiar to you if you don't.
And if you look on the back, there's the divided monarchy on the back of this paper at the bottom, if you want to look a little bit closer. There is actually not too bad. She's gonna make the point that the the capital of the kingdom is right near the dividing line. And draw the same comparison to Richmond, the capital, the Confederacy in Washington, D.C. The capital of the Union, and they're only about seventy miles apart. And so here you've got. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but Jerusalem, and then the capital is Samaria. But the religious capitals are Bethel and Dan, where they're going to place the two golden calves.
On understanding the Old Testament, and what you're looking at is the divided monarchy, this north-south split. So just as in the history of the United States, we split down the middle. And wound up with uh our capital city right near that border between north and south. So too, in the story, Israel. The northern ten tribes are north of Jerusalem. And the southern tribes, which are primarily Judah, Simeon's been absorbed, Levi is down there. Uh is uh Jerusalem and south. Our capital cities in the south, Jerusalem, and in the north, Samaria. Actually, the northern capital will move several times. The northern kingdom will be generally unstable. There will be three different dynasties during the time. But this is uh the divided kingdom in north and south. Real space, real time, but there's something else you need to know about this split between the north and south. And what you need to know about that split is what happens to the religion of Yahwehism. That is, the worship of Yahweh in the northern kingdom. Because when the nation splits in nine thirty-one B.C., the king who takes over in the north is a fellow named Jeroboam the First. And he is, like many uh leaders in the political realm, a little bit insecure. And so as we turn to a passage in First Kings, chapter twelve, we hear about what Jeroboam does in this kingdom. He's given permission to split north and south deliberately. But he, of course, is not given permission to turn the nation away from their gods. Here's the passage, First Kings, chapter twelve, verses twenty-five through three. Then Jeroboam said to his heart, now the kingdom will return to the house of David. If this people go up to offer sacrifices in the house of Yahweh at Jerusalem. Then the heart of this people will return to their lord, and even to Rehoboam, the king of Judah, and they will kill me. And return to Rehoboam, king of Judah. So what has happened is the political split between north and south has been approved. Yahweh says, that's okay, you can have the political split. But no religious split. But Jeroboam says, oh, my gosh, if I let these people keep going to Jerusalem to worship at the temple. They're gonna say, let bygones be bygones, and they're gonna reunite with the south, and I'm gonna lose both my throne and my life. And so Jeroboam the First, rather than being concerned about the kingdom of God, is concerned about the kingdom of Jeroboam. And he makes this decision. So the king consulted. And he made two golden calves. And he said to the people, oh, it's too much for you to go up to Jerusalem to worship. So behold your gods, O Israel, that brought you up from the land of Egypt. And he set one of these calves, Bethel, and the other he put in Dan. Now, where are Bethel and Dan? Well, if we go back to this map, we see that Dan is Jeroboam's new northern border, and Bethel is his new southern border. As is the practice of many ancient kings, Jeroboam is marking his borders with his new cult sites. But did you hear the announcement of his new cult site, his new religion? Behold your gods, O Israel, who brought you up out of the land of Egypt out of the house of slavery. Have you heard that line before? He made two golden calves. The narrator wants your mind to go back to that unfortunate incident at the foot of Mount Sinai. That's where he's sending you, because the narrator sees Jeroboam's rebellion against Yahweh in this action. As equal to Aaron's rebellion at the foot of Mount Sinai. He sets up his two alternate cult sites. He sets up an alternate symbol at the cult site. And if you read further on in the passage, he hires a bunch of uh renegade priests. And changes the calendar as well. In other words, what Jeroboam has done is he has set up a counterfeit cult in the northern kingdom. And that counterfeit cult is designed in order to convince the standard worshiper. That they can worship Yahweh just as well up here at Dan and Bethel, as they could have worshipped him down in Jerusalem. But here's the problem. He sets up golden calves at Dan and Bethel. Do you know who the calf represents in Canaanite religion? See, it's an old symbol. It's an indigenous symbol. It's a symbol of the indigenous deity of Canaan, and his name is Baal. What Jeroboam has done, he's taken the symbol of Baalism and a compromised content of Yahwehism. And he's blended them together and told the average person in the pew, no worries, this is the religion you were raised with. Now, Dan is a very famous cult site. You're looking at an image of what is currently in the national park. Of Israel at Dan, and what you see here are ancient steps that lead up to an ancient platform. Where sacrifices were made to this syncretized deity, this blend of Baal and Yahwehism. This cult site actually goes back all the way to the Bronze Age. It's ancient sacred space. Now, the National Parks Authority has put in this little kind of hollow altar to help you get the feel. But the point is that the cult site at Dan is well-known. We know it from archaeology, we know it from the text, we know it from the testimony of surrounding nations. What would that platform have looked like? Well, it would have had uh steps running up to a flat platform. And on that platform, the priests would have actually offered sacrifice. I have been to this site a hundred times. I have taken dozens of photos of students on these steps. This is where Jeroboam calls all of Israel to worship his compromised god. Now, let's get back to that golden calf. Because that golden calf, again, is as old as the hills of Canaan. What you're looking at right now are images of Baal coming out of Garret and out of Syria. And in each of these images, the god of Canaan is being portrayed according to his skill set. His resume is being offered to us in visual form. As you look at the image on the left, the image coming from Garret, you see that Baal has got his arm raised. And his arm is raised with a mace to fight his enemies. Often, that mace is replaced by a lightning bolt. Because Baal is the god of the storm, the thunderstorm. Which is the only way in northern Canaan that you get the rain that will do to finish the agricultural cycle. If you don't get late-season thunderstorms, your crop doesn't come into the barn. So a god of storm, a god of rain, is essential to your survival as a farmer. What else do you see on this image? As you look at his helmet, you see little horns coming out, don't you? And what are those horns? They're the horns of a calf. Because Baal is not the supreme deity of Canaan. His father, ale, is. And so his father, ale, is always represented by a bull. But Baal is always represented by a bull calf. What else do you see in this image? Underneath his feet are the stylized presentation of mountains, because Baal is a god of the mountains. And in his left hand, you see a stalk of wheat, because he's also the god of fertility. Now, in the ancient Near Eastern mind, deities actually lived in the regions they were worshiped in. So Canaan is where Baal lives. He's limited to that region as well. So for the average worshiper in the ancient world, they would have been scared to death to move into Canaan and not worship Baal. So for Jeroboam to hold this image of Baal and mix it with Yahwehism is brilliant. Because he's playing on the fears of his audience, and he's playing on their lack of theological education as well. Because the average person in the pew doesn't know any better. And this is one reason that Isaiah is targeting the leaders, not necessarily the average person in the pew. Over here on the left, you're looking at another image of this Canaanite deity astride a bull calf. And once again, his right arm is raised, and he is throwing lightning bolts at his opponents. More images of Baal. These little metal, cast metal images would have been covered with gold or silver. Uh, these are ancient pieces, and so, of course, the gold and silver has been stripped. But you see again, the right arm raised and the image of Baal, uh, the opponent of Yahweh. This little calf in particular that we've been looking at, actually is a very famous piece that was excavated at Ashkelon. And Ashkelon is the Wheaton College dig, and my colleague, Dan Master, was a part of this excavation. So these little bull calves are all over Canaan as a representation of Baal. And Jeroboam the First takes this representation, blends it with Yahweh, and says, you just go ahead and worship here. Now, in some contexts, this would be uh characterized as a brilliant. Exercise in contextualization, right? You take the symbol of the resident religion, you sort of sneak in the content of Christianity. There are missiologists out there that would declare this an outstanding method. The prophets, they call it idolatry. And the reason they call it idolatry is there's a line between contextualization and syncretism. And that line is crossed whenever your audience is confused. If your audience doesn't know the difference between Baal and Yahweh, you've crossed the line. If your audience doesn't know the difference between Allah and Yahweh, you've crossed the line. We, of course, are tasked with bringing the gospel to the lost, not a message of syncretism. Okay, who does Baal hang out with? Well, he hangs out with the classic fertility goddess in the ancient world. This is Ashra. Now, in some of the Canaanite stories, Ashra is the wife of ale. And in other Canaanite stories, she's the wife of Baal. So, I don't know, a little bit of family dynamics here. But what we do know about Ashra is she's a fertility goddess. And these are known as pillar figurines, and they're very well-known. Uh, the bottom half of the image is uh just a plain pillar. That's why they're called pillar figurines, made very simply. And the head actually comes from a mold. Standard fertility goddess presentation, she is extending her nursing breasts to the world. This goddess is designed to be eternally pregnant. And I can tell you that in almost every other representation in the ancient Near East. Uh, there would be a much more graphic presentation of private parts, but these are unique. These are not fertility goddesses that would be found in Mesopotamia or in Egypt. No, these fertility goddesses are found in Judah. And they're found in the seventh and eighth century. In other words, during the days of Aspise's revival and the day of Josias' revival. I find this a little troubling, that in multiple domestic contexts, we would be bumping into these pillar figurines. But a few interesting details, uh, they are always in domestic contexts. They're never in temples. So these are things that were in people's poses. So do we really know how to interpret these? Clearly, they are representations of Ashra, but are they representations because people are actually worshiping Ashra? Or perhaps have this form simply become a representation of the well wishes of fertility? Meaning, perhaps every mother-in-law gave one of these to a daughter-in-law, and the daughter-in-law put it up on the shelf and said, may you have many babies, you know?
Do we do anything with things like that? Ever walked into a house and seen a horseshoe on the wall and pointed up so the luck doesn't run out? Rabbit's foot, you know, give give things that, I mean, we're not really worshiping them. But yet, there's probably a way that if we took it too far, it could be i- idolatry in our lives. And so they've got these things setting around, you know, you kind of give it, oh, cheer. I hope you have lots of babies. And so a lot of things we can take too far. I visited Ephesus once, and they have a goddess who is a fertility goddess. And she fell from the sky because she was found as a meteorite. And that's a goddess that they're talking about in Acts, I think, chapter nineteen, when Paul is run out of Ephesus. Because the people are burning their scrolls, and they're not buying the symbols of the, their local deity. And that goddess is portrayed with many, many, many breasts all over her body. Because that was a sign of fertility. And so when she was talking about how, well, some, sometimes the poor trails are much more graphic. That's one example of how graphic the portrayal can become. So, I, we'd probably find it odd if we walked into somebody's house and there was one of those things setting up there. But.
Rabbit's foot was supposed to bring good luck. vaguely remember that.
Florid flowers.
You should look for those as kids. Now she got me curious, throwing rice at weddings. Seeds. Well, weddings, too. I didn't know this, um, that you're supposed to start it on the half hour down. Instead of up, that that was a good luck thing. I mean.
If the clock was moving up.
I was just like, I would, if I'd known that, I wouldn't have stood. Because I don't want to go to some type of, you know, oh, gosh, you know, people think this or that.
Kind of the way that we throw rice at weddings, may your birth control not work. That's what they're doing. Yeah, that's. So we're not sure exactly what they mean, but we do know that they're all over Judah during times when we think they should not be. So the accusation against Jeroboam the First, the reason that the northern kingdom winds up being cursed. Is the crime of syncretism. Another fancy word, but as defined by the Evangelical Dictionary theology. Syncretism is the process by which elements of one religion are assimilated into another religion. Resulting in a change in the fundamental tenets or nature of both those religions. It is the union of two or more opposite beliefs, so that the synthesized form is a new thing. That would be the technical definition. Let me give you a more contemporary definition. There are many ways of the mountain, but each of us must choose a practice that feels true to his own heart. It is not necessary for you to evaluate the practices chosen by others.
Anybody got a, a problem with anything in there?
It's not what the Bible says.
No, that's certainly true. What other problem might you have? It's not necessary for you to evaluate the practice of others. It may be true for you, but it's not true for me, but whatever you want to do. It may be true for you, but it's not true for me. But whatever you want to do is fine.
Who is this? That'd be discriminating. Yeah, did that. Let's include everyone.
It becomes chaotic. I mean, there's so many different.
Well, and there are many paths.
I've heard people say that to me.
Yeah.
Many paths to God. There's no one way. Jesus is the only way.
Sadly, I've heard some pastors say that.
There are recordings of bishops in some denominations saying that, so yeah, that actually exactly that. So.
Well, the problem is the mountain has a peak. And all those paths going up have to come out at the same peak. If you're walking into the desert, I could see there are many, many ways. Because you can spread out and there's no conclusion. But when you're walking up the mountain, you gotta come out same place.
The top.
Yeah.
I would add one more thing. If you don't know where you're going, any path will do. And so, I mean, if there's lots of different places that you can go.
Then when you get to the peak of the mountain, you have a fight to see who's the king of the hill.
There you go.
That's an unhappy situation.
Push people off their path.
In the winter.
It almost, it's one of those things you hear, and it almost makes your skin crawl because you realize that if there are people that are listening to that and people that believe that, there are people that are lost. If they're on one of those many paths that goes nowhere. Jesus said that some paths are very wide and go nowhere or to hell. Other paths are very narrow and only lead to God.
It's kind of tricky to not evaluate the practices chosen by others. If you select a surgeon, you're like, well, I don't care what his experience is or or a banker, I don't care if they know anything or investments or. You have to use some kind of common sense and.
Yes, you say banker and different jobs, but don't we care what our doctor knows and his process? Don't we? Or your banker, all kinds of other things. We really care about making sure that they know what is right and how to get that process right and we should care about what we believe in our spiritual life too and what we teach.
But it might be all right if they stayed at a Holiday Inn Express last night. Remember those commercials.
Oh, I stayed at the Holiday Inn.
Yeah, I've never done surgery before, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. That was a smart thing to do, so you can trust me.
That would be a modern definition of syncretism. Or perhaps the word we might want to use is pluralism. I bring this to the surface because I want you to realize that this question of how many ways are there up the mountain? And who is the god that we serve is not a new problem. It's actually an ancient problem. And one that the prophets had to respond to. And this is one of the major themes that Isaiah is responding to. When he speaks of Israel as a wayward spouse, as a rebellious child. Because they're not actually following the dictates of the Almighty. Rather, they are compromising their own faith as it might be convenient. So as we reach the end of this lesson and we realize that we are dealing with a divided monarchy, a northern and southern community. And Isaiah is preaching in the southern community. We need to realize that our prophet is a city slicker. He actually is preaching from Jerusalem. His audience in this divided monarchy is primarily kings and the upper class. He himself is a bit of an elite, probably of the royal line, definitely white collar and definitely well-educated. He speaks in Jerusalem to this broader audience that for a while will include the Northern Kingdom. And as he speaks, he is profoundly aware of the syncretism that has infiltrated his community and speaking to them about their loyalties. And so we end this session with a quote coming out of another prophet, the prophet Hosea, chapter eight, verse five. Who speaks to this same problem. And he states that Yahweh has rejected your calf, O Samarian. Saying, my anger burns against them. How long will they be incapable of innocence? Far from Israel is evenness. A craftsman made it, so it's not God. Surely the calf of Samaria will be broken into pieces. So the next session, we deal with the Neo-Assyrian Empire. I'll see you then.
What was the last line? He's speaking to his audience about their.
Syncreties.
Syncretism. That's the line above. He's aware of syncretism as a career is that.
Oh, loyalties.
Loyalty.
He's speaking to the audience about.
And it's really, the syncretism, you know, anybody know why Christmas is on December twenty-fifth? Because we don't know what day Jesus was born. But there was a pagan, especially in Northern Europe, there was a pagan celebration at that day, and they bring in the green boughs at the, at that fall or winter equinox to remind them that the world was going to be reborn. And so that's where we get our Christmas tree. And so it was ideally designed to pull the people away from worshiping the pagan gods, gods of the forest and that sort of thing. And to draw them to Christ, but you know, you kind of meld things together. And when she was talking about, well, the problem doesn't come until you well-think, meld things together. And they don't know who they're worshiping. Are they still worshiping the pagan gods when they're bringing in those green bough, evergreen boughs? And so, you know, we, that's, that's one example when syncretism could have infiltrated Christianity a little bit. As a way to try to move people away from their former religion to a new religion. But if they're saying, oh, to the priest that's there, oh yeah, Jesus, Jesus. But they're going home and they're saying whoever, whatever goddess or whatever that they're worshiping. So it's not something she talked about how, you know, missiologists or people on mission to convert people would think, well, that's a very sound practice. But if you go too far, then you might lose sight of Jesus.
Because we have a church down in Madison, and they wanted to reach new people. And so they thought we need to change our building. So they took things down and took, including the crops.
Put in a what?
They, they took the cross down.
Or they put in spice?
Nope, nothing there. So they, oh, well, you know, we'll make sure we're just worshiping God and there's the, we don't want people who are not used to that to be embarrassed about the cross. And, and I just heard somebody not too long ago too, and when, at Easter, they posted this on Facebook, and it's a friend of mine sadly. That said, let's not talk about blood, let's not talk about him dying, let's not talk about sin at Easter. You know, so that we, we don't offend anybody that's just coming on Easter Sunday. And I thought, and I wanted to write it, but I knew there'd be feedback from it. And we can talk about, we need to explain how much he loves us. I mean, there's a way to explain the blood and the death and the sin, you know, our sin and what he's done for us. There's ways to explain it to new people who only come Easter. I know, but to not mention it at all because you might offend them, you might upset them, you might. I was like, oh, that's not bad. That's, that's not celebrating the resurrection Sunday.
Rather than offend the people, you're offending God.
Yeah. And I don't know, I kind of want to go back to Madison, that church and like, did they draw more people there? And really get them to know Christ? Or did they just draw people there to gather and have fun?
What's going to keep them there?
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing that you get really close to when you start combining things like that. Well, I mean, it's not close to what Jeroboam did, was it? Was idolatry. I mean, making things with your hand and worshiping them as God. And how, what an affront it was to God, because you go back to the Ten Commandments. You shall have no other god but me. You shall not make a graven image. All these things that they weren't supposed to do and, you know, why did he do it? What a power. He wanted to maintain control.
And God still created this down.
Yeah.
With the free will.
Well, as long as we have a choice, there will always be people and us that make wrong choices. But we live on this side of the cross, so we have forgiveness when we make the wrong choices. Now, ideally what's supposed to happen is during the week, you're supposed to do your two lessons. And so last week, you would have done the two lessons for this week. Or the three lessons, I guess, day one, day two, and day three. And so next week, what the expectation will be is that you'll read, do the reading for next week.
Week five.
For, for week five, and you'll do the three lessons for week five. And, you know, we, we, we split it up, so we didn't really have an opportunity for you to do the lessons ahead for week four. But hopefully you at least look through them. And I thought maybe we would kind of walk through at least one of them. And I, I picked because it called to me was the lesson for day two. And I thought she really spent a lot of time talking about the lesson for day three. So I thought we might look at the lesson for day two.
This, this golden calf thing, they didn't remember lesson, did they?
So we start with some scripture and I, I'm having issues, so I couldn't make slides. So this is the scripture that we start with and they, they say in the first contact, or she says in the first contact, that the united monarchy only lasted through the first three kings. And she says into the book, readings eleven, nine through thirteen. And so I'll read that, and this is the New American Standard Version. Now, the Lord was angry with Solomon. And think about where Solomon was to start. And where Solomon finishes up. I mean, God asked him what he wanted, and he didn't ask for money or anything. He asked for wisdom. And he was a man of great wisdom. And then he invites all these women from different religions in, and he takes up their religious practices. And everything that Jeroboam did, he did in his own household and in the nation. Now, the Lord was angry with Solomon because his heart was turned away from the Lord, the god of Israel, who had appeared to him twice. And had commanded him concerning this thing, that he should not go after other gods. But he did not observe what the Lord had commanded. So the Lord said to Solomon, because you have done this and you have not kept my covenant and my statutes, which I have commanded you. I will surely tear the kingdom from you and will give it to your servant. Nevertheless, I will not do it in your days for the sake of your father David. But I will tear it out of the hand of your son. However, I will not tear away all the kingdom. But I will give one tribe to your son for the sake of my servant David and for the sake of Jerusalem, which I have chosen. Wow. Want to get a letter from God like that? So remembering our last lesson, list all the reasons you can remember about why God was angry with Solomon. He didn't keep his commandments. Yep. And if you remember, I forget, it's in Deuteronomy seventeen, fourteen through seventeen. He was commanded not to acquire many horses, and he did. And he was commanded not to acquire many wives, and he did. And he was commanded not to seek after silver and gold, and he did. And she called in lesson one, she called that the constitution from Deuteronomy. That Deuteronomy was the constitution, and Solomon had ended up violating that constitution over again. So why was God angry with him? Because he broke his commandments. He was prideful. He oppressed the nation. He oppressed the northern, the people in the northern areas and forced them to be slaves to build his temples and and he was disobedient. He was idolatrous.
So in verse eleven, in my translation, it said your attitude. You know, Solomon changed his attitude from, Lord, I just want your, you know, your wisdom to, I want this stuff. And I put down lots of gold, lots of wives, lots of horses, you know, so it wasn't, again, having that moderation is always good anyway, but and even more important, like the wives worshiped other gods is the thing.
Right.
And.
Well, and he took the wives to make political conquest, to raise his wealth. I mean, everything was about money and power.
And as I read the Old Testament too, that, you know, again, there were so many men that had multiple wives. I'm like, so were there that many women, more than men? Because I know they wanted to bear children, that was part of it, but what, what are the men? I mean, if it was balanced out, then there were men who were totally single then.
Same between his wives and concubines that totaled about a thousand women. I'm like, oh my gosh. How is he around the nation?
Yeah, that's true too. That's, yeah, that's a point, yeah. They died in the war.
Population could have been reduced by that.
Yeah. Because it's still like, whoa. I know they wanted to have more kids, you know, so that's, add concubines or other, you know, to.
We got all those lonely women out there. I guess maybe.
That's right.
Justify anything I want.
Didn't we have a funny incident?
We were in Israel, and one of the ladies had this beautiful white hair, and one of the guys wanted to buy her.
And have her as a concubine.
He was serious.
Yeah.
We think he was serious.
Wow.
And they had to retrieve her.
There's a worldwide trade in slaves. People who are kidnapped and.
So women, if you go there, you're gonna have a man with you. Well, the political thing is common, that was in Europe and different, other countries where there were kings. They were always trying to build alliances.
Yeah.
So that's going on for a long time.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Did they, when they did that, did they get a lot of money from that country? They'd take a woman from a certain country.
Sometimes, but a lot of times that alliance led to a political alliance where, you know, they, they'd trade a lion. trade alliance and Solomon was very good at establishing trade routes and, uh, very good at taxation. Unless you were the one being taxed, then you probably wouldn't have thought so.
He did think, unless Solomon did things in group, groups, he'd probably just not remember everybody's name.
No, he couldn't. I mean.
Three years.
Yeah.
I'll be back.
I'll see you again in three years.
The kings in, uh, in Europe would do that. They would marry other kings' daughters into the family and that assured you wouldn't have a war between the two. It was political.
Yeah.
Just like an ally thing.
So on page forty-five, the next question, how do all these individual things add up to the one big thing in this passage?
Plus two. Plus one is three. It's a simple addition.
Yeah, worship God and God alone. The one big thing is to worship God.
Yeah. The, I answered it like it was a consequence, which was to remove Solomon's line from the throne. Notice that God doesn't completely take the kingdom away from Solomon or his heirs and why? David. Remembering that David, even though David did not finish well, most of the time he did very well. And, you know, I mean, to Samuel seven, it, that's where he talks about he was a man after God's own heart. Then we were supposed to read one Kings one fourteen, twenty-three through some, something. Alright, so one Kings one fourteen, behold, while you are still speaking with the king, I will come after you and confirm your words. And this is God providing instruction to Nathan because he's sending Nathan to confront Solomon. And so God is telling him, while you're still speaking with Solomon, I will come in after you and I will confirm what you're saying to him. So God's trying to get Solomon back on the right path. And then we were supposed to read also one Kings one twenty-three. They told the king saying, here is Nathan the prophet. And when he came in before the king, he prostrated himself before the king with his face to the ground. So I, I'd say he's offering appropriate homage to the king.
Respect, yeah.
Yeah, respect. And then lastly, one Kings one twenty-six. But me, even me, your servant and Zadok the priest and Mananiah, the son of Jehoiada and your servant Solomon, he is not invited. So Solomon had no interest in talking to people who were going to tell him things he didn't wanna hear. Ever been that person? You know, somebody's got news that you don't wanna hear. I'll let it go to voicemail.
Yeah.
I, I know I'll tell you what.
Is that the reason you never pick up when I call?
So how is Solomon trying to get his attention? Or how is God trying to get Solomon's attention? Sends people, wise counselors. It's not much wonder that, uh, Rehoboam, Rehoboam, his son didn't wanna hear the wise people, he just wanted to hear the people in his. Is Solomon listening? I'm not even, they're not even gonna come in, I'm not gonna let them talk. And then read one Kings eleven, twenty-six through thirty-nine. And then Jeroboam, the son of Nebat and Ephraimite of Zeradah, Zeradah, Solomon's servant, whose mother's name was a widow, also rebelled against the king. Now, this was the reason why he rebelled against the king. Solomon built the millow and closed up the breach of the city of his father David. Now, the man Jeroboam was a valiant warrior and when Solomon saw the young man, saw that the young man was industrious, he appointed him over the forced labor of the house of Joseph. It came about at that time when Jeroboam went out of Jerusalem that the prophet Ahijah, the Shilohite, found him on the road. Now, Ahijah had clothed himself with a new cloak and both of them were alone in the field. Then Ahijah took hold of the new cloak, which was on him and then tore it into twelve pieces. He said to Jeroboam, take for yourself ten pieces, for thus says the Lord, the God of Israel, behold, I will tear the kingdom out of the hand of Solomon and give you ten tribes. But he will have one tribe for the sake of my servant David and for the sake of Jerusalem, the city which I have chosen from all the tribes of Israel, because they have forsaken me and have worshipped Ashtora, the goddess of the Sidonians, Kimash, the god of Moab, and Miltum, the god of the sons of Amun. And they have not walked in my ways, doing what is right in my sight and observing my statutes and my ordinances as his father David did. Nevertheless, I will not take away the whole kingdom out of his hand, but I will make him ruler the days of his life for the sake of my servant David, whom I chose, who observed my commandments and my statutes. But I will take the kingdom from his son's hand and give it to you, even ten tribes. But to his son, I will give one tribe that my servant David may have a lamp always before me in Jerusalem, the city where I have chosen for myself to put my name. I will take you and you shall reign over whatever you desire and you shall be king over Israel. Then it will be that if you listen to all that I command, you and walk in my ways and do what is right in my sight by observing my statutes and my commandments as my servant David did, then I will be with you and build you an enduring house as I built, like, built for David. And I will give Israel to you. Thus I will afflict the descendants of David for this, but not always. Well, we know by the introduction that she told us that in seven twenty-two B.C., the northern kingdom was completely destroyed. That was the ten tribes that God gave Jeroboam because he started out and didn't do any of these things that God wanted him to do. And it, it's amazing to me.
Didn't God know that?
Well, he does. He tells him, if you do this, then this is what you'll get. But if you don't.
Lose it all.
I think I know the answer, but it says, there's twelve tribes.
Yeah.
So ten tribes will be destroyed because they weren't following. They give them one. Where's the other one?
Yeah, I thought that too.
I think I know the answer, but.
Well, she says in the reading somewhere that Simeon had already been assimilated into Judah, mostly assimilated. And it, it's always a little bit confusing. But you also have the Levites who did not get land.
Yeah.
And so they were spread out in the northern kingdom and in the southern kingdom, or they should have been. But whether that was allowed to continue or whether all the Levites were driven, driven to the southern kingdom, I don't know.
Well, Levites ran the temple.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were priests.
And that's what I kind of, they didn't include them since they.
They weren't on land.
No.
Didn't go wrong, you know, maybe so.
It's too bad that wasn't explained.
Yeah, I didn't know about that.
Well, the, the other thing is that there were actually thirteen tribes. Because there were the Ephramites and the Benjamites. Cause Joseph wasn't listed among the twelve tribes, it was his two sons that were listed, were Ephraim and Benjamin. And so that adds a little bit more confusion. And if you go into the New Testament and some of the lists, there's only eleven. And you gotta really dig to find out what happened to the other one because the tribe of Dan was cut off by God. And so it's not in some of those lists. So, you know. I didn't even know, remember that there was a tribe of Simeon and I.
Yeah, that wasn't familiar to me either.
So who is Jeroboam?
It was one of Solomon's officials. It said he rebelled against the king, so he kinda knew what was coming there. And he was put in charge of the labor force, as they said he did good work.
And so they used the word Joseph there, but he was an Ephraim, he was an Ephraimite. So he was from the tribe of Joseph in a way, but he was put, put in charge of the slave labor from the tribe of Joseph. So. So he was a servant of Solomon and he ended up being the first king of the northern kingdom, one of many. And I don't remember that any of them were ever said, and they did right in the ways of the Lord. What does Jeroboam, or who does Jeroboam meet on the road as he's leaving Jerusalem?
Ahijah.
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 What?
What'd they say?
Ahijah is his name.
Yeah, a prophet from God. Ahijah.
Doesn't sound familiar.
No, well. In ancient Israel, the prophets use a variety of ways to communicate their messages. And if you think back to Ezekiel and you think back to Jeremiah and some of the strange things. I mean, Ezekiel, or no, one of them dug a hole through the wall and he could only eat the food that was passed through, through the wall, hole in the wall and did all sorts of strange things and, and. I think, was it Jeremiah who took all the new clay pieces and broke them because, and all sorts of visual things to get their attention. What?
Somebody cut up the woman and sent her body parts to each of the tribes.
Oh, that's a nice, that's a nice.
Visual.
Yeah. And, and so in this case, it's another visual indication and it makes a point. This guy put on a nice new cloak and he goes out, meets him and starts tearing it into pieces and he tears up into twelve and gives Jeroboam two, uh, ten.
What? Didn't he say, take your pick?
I don't.
I've had it said something in my Bible about take your pick and I'm going, really? Take your pick?
Well, and we don't have the idea of cloaks. You know, they didn't have, they didn't have tons of them, yeah. But theirs, I mean, that would be restrictive, but he wanted to make a point of, you know, what it meant, so.
Well, if you think about James, James tells us that if you have two cloaks and someone doesn't, you give your neighbor one.
Yeah.
Well, that was perhaps all that you had was the cloak that was on your back. And they, they made a big deal about that. If you take it as a pledge, you have to give it back to them at night because that was what they slept under. So, you know. Alright, so that's what he did and tears his cloak into twelve and shares. And what does the prophet tell Jeroboam that Yahweh will give him?
Ten tribes.
What? You'd think that that should be the wealth.
Two.
The wealth, you know, but, I mean, Solomon had amassed a great amount of wealth in Jerusalem, so. I don't imagine, uh, let's see, which Rehoboam would have been really hurting. What did Yahweh tear the, why did Yahweh tear the kingdom from Solomon?
Cause he forsaked and worshipped God.
What?
He forsaked God and worshipped God.
What, what word do the prophets use when they talk about Israel doing that to describe it?
I, are you talking about idolatry?
Well, that's worshiping falls. What?
Like a harlot or?
Well, that's along the right tracks.
Prostitutes, are you?
Well, they went whoring after other gods.
Right.
Yeah, unfaithfulness or not obedience.
Adultery?
Oh, okay.
You have committed adultery. And again, if they knew the Ten Commandments, that'd be, but all those things, you know, whoring after, that was one of, that's what one prophet said in those very words. So disobedience in many ways.
Yeah.
Alright, and then finally read one Kings eleven, forty-one through. And so Solomon dies. And Solomon was buried and slept with his father. And then King Reboam acts foolishly. No wonder why God's. Look what you've got. You've got all this. You got all this. And so instead of being a wise person, he takes after his father. So Reboam went to Shechem for all Israel had come to Shechem to make him king. Now, when Jeroboam, the son of Nebat, heard of it, he was living in Egypt, where he was yet in Egypt, where he had fled from the presence of King Solomon. Then they sent and called him and Jeroboam and all the assembly of Israel came and spoke to Reboam saying, your father made our yoke hard. Now therefore lighten the hard service of your father and his heavy yoke which he put on us and we will serve you. Then he told him to go away and he'd think about it for three days. He talked to the youngs, the youngsters, he talked to the elders. The elders said, sure, lighten up a little bit. Then he talked to the youngsters and they said, no, put the screws to them. And that's what he did. And, uh, so the king did not listen to the people, for it was a turn of events from the Lord that he might establish his word, which the Lord spoke through Elijah and the Shiloh, the Shilohite to Jeroboam, the son of Nebat. Jeroboam told him, I will add to your yoke. And when all Israel saw that the king did not listen to them, the people answered him, what portion do we have in David? We have no inheritance in the son of Jesse, to your tents, so Israel, now look after your own house, David. And so, uh, Israel departed to their tents, but as for the sons of Israel who lived in the cities of Judah, Rehoboam reigned over them. Then came Rehoboam Sanhaderam, who was over the forced labor and all Israel stoned him to death. So being a messenger from the king is not going to be well received. So Israel had been in rebellion against the house of David to this day. And so when the house of David came back into their presence in the form of Jesus, ignored, belittled, disbelieved, turned away.
Now, the house of David was considered Judah?
Now, the house of David was considered Judah?
Mm-hmm.
So the other people didn't care anything about the house of David?
No. Anybody got anything they'd like to add to what we've talked about today? I mean, we're already two minutes past our time, God Jackson would be.
Well, I did next week's lesson, so I'll have to read this. Interesting.
Were you ready for next?
So you're a week ahead, you can be next.
Yeah, I, I don't know why I thought uh, five was where we were to be, but I did have a paper in there, I went to the next chapter.
Well, the value of obedience.
Oh. And faithfulness.
And the consequences of disobedience.
Well, in Hebrews eleven, we're told about having faith, we're going to see, and they saw. And yet they turned away. They saw over and over again the consequences of turning away. Well, next week, we'll do lesson number five, and June can lead next week, because she's already.
Two weeks ahead. Well, I noticed that king over Israel was a bad guy. He kinda compromised, it wasn't Yahweh, but Yahism or something like that.
Well, Yahism was the, ism is just following, so following Yahweh was Yah, Yahism. And they had established the northern king, was that Jerbo, yeah, Jeroboam had established pluralism, where he combined Yahweh with uh, Baal and made that syncretic conglomeration, which is, we might call pluralism today, most of us don't, syncretism doesn't roll right off our tongue.
Reminds me of the story of Jesus and the shepherd, and the she, the sheep know the shepherd's voice. And this guy. He had his own route.
Well, he knew many paths, doesn't matter each one you take, and don't tell anybody else they're on the wrong one.
Leads to destruction. They had no covering.
Oh, would anyone like to close us in prayer? What?
I can pray.
Oh, thank you. Great.
Thank you, Lord, for this day, we thank you for each day that you give us. We're grateful for time to come together and learn more, and have you put new understandings in our minds and our hearts, so help us to follow, be faithful to you each and every day, through all that we say and do, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen, thank you.
Thank you.
Which lesson did you do?
Four.
You did?
I'm sorry to get on the phone.
I don't know.
It's amazing to me how many kind of women sway the men's minds. It's like, oh my gosh.
I thought we were on the same page.
I don't say me and I are on the same page.
I know we don't. This is a deep study, isn't it?
It is a study.
This is college stuff.
And you know, it's kinda confusing to me, cause I'm reading every day, but I get kinda lost sometimes. Now, was that this thing, or, or in Kings now?
Jeroboam and Rehoboam.
Yeah.
Thinking, now, is this, is this the son, or is this guy that was appointed, and who's it, who's it this now?
So many that are both.
So it's a mistake, just split them up.
Everybody have a gun.
It's.
Well, it was unfortunate that that had happened, I guess.
What is all that stuff? Before that came on, it looked like a big head, I didn't notice that.
Flags on those big tubes or something. I don't know what to do.
It's only civil property, yes. It's a big flag, it's in that tube.
Maybe it has. I don't know.
Rockets, are those rockets being assembled?
Yeah.
Yeah.